Today, thanks to everyone for being here today. This can be an opportunity to get an update on Project Mars. And I'd like to welcome, we have Bill Wiley, Tim Bonkoski. If you guys want to come on up and anyone else you'd like to have join us today? Thanks so much. Morning, Mr. Wiley. Bill, do you want to lead it out for us?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I know you can. All right. I want to do just a little opening statement. And then Tim's going to do a presentation on the Mars project in a lot more detail. But first, I want to thank you for inviting me here. I've been here just about a little over a month. And during that time, I spent quite a bit of time trying to find out what's going on within the office. And probably interviewed 20 people, almost all the senior management, talking about what the priorities of the office are. And one of those priorities, clearly, is the subject we're talking about today. And I want to give you an analogy on why this is important to the assessor's office. A simple analogy is that we were driving a 64-year-old Chevy. And the 64-year-old Chevy has done really well for a period of time. But because of requirements changing and growth in the county, we've had to have an air conditioner, we've put on a roof rack, we changed the transmission. And you'll see some of that in Tim's presentation. But it doesn't meet the needs going forward, and it's having a hard time meeting the needs currently. And so, we need to have a better system. And frankly, one of the key concerns that I have with our current system is that it's, using the car analogy, it's had 300,000 miles. We're having a hard time finding mechanics, i.e. software programmers for our program. And parts are hard to find. And so, we're at an end of life on our current system. And that's one of the reasons we need to go forward is that if we have a couple of key retirements here, we will not be able to maintain our current system. So, that's a concern to me. So, be aware, I really believe this is important going forward. And I want to make that statement clear to each of you, at least based on what I know today. And you'll hear some more in your presentation. So, it's time for a new car. And the assessor's office took the initiative to start working on this probably five years ago, actually under a previous assessor, when they started this process. And we're here today with the Mars project. It's evolved into this Mirco Assessment Replacement System project over time. And what's been done to date, and it's around 70% complete, is of good quality. And you'll see a little bit of a demonstration of it here today. We like what we see. Now, the problem is, and kind of the topic of this meeting, is that we're not ready to go prime time next July. And that was the original schedule, is that we're going to go next July, go prime time. And so, the purpose of this meeting is to ask for an extension on our contract, so that we have some more time to make sure it works right. So, I think part of the concern here is that it went public, that we weren't going to go live, probably to most people around November the 4th. By the way, that was my third day on the job. And the steering committee, I think, was somewhat surprised that, hey, what's going on here? There was a little bit of pre-work done, so some people knew before that that it wasn't going to go live. But that was the time it became known. People broadly understood that we weren't going to go live in July. How we got to that point is not completely clear to me. And there's lots of factors that I've heard in talking to people, both inside and outside the department, on why we're looking like we're going to be late. I don't know if the date was even doable from the beginning. So, when the date was established, was it even doable? Did we know enough about the work so that it was doable? Was there a reason to drive it forward for political purposes? I don't know that. But clearly, we were trying to go forward with this before an election. So, that was in 2020. Is there a management incentive for some key employees that were driving us to try to go forward regardless of whether or not the system was ready to go? You know, that's a question that I don't know. Did the amount of work and scope change as the project unfolded? I believe that to be the case. Because as I've learned more about the system, what was originally proposed in 2013 and 2016, when it was assigned to Esri, the amount of work, not necessarily the scope, but the amount of work that was needed to be done, appears to have changed. When people knew this and when people were notified is a good question. But that being said, you know, surprises are not good. And we surprised some people saying, hey, what's going on here? Now, you're going to get some background on what happened, the actual details here. But we're not going to be able to go live with the system on July 2020. And so, what we're asking for is an extension until February of 2021. And we have some confidence that we can meet that, and we'll be able to show you that in a minute. I guess, at this point, I'll turn it over to Tim Bonkoski, who I'm going to lead with this. Been here again a little over a month, maybe 30 days in the office. What I know is this is one of three priorities that I've established for the office. Getting this new system is critical. This 64 Chevy is not going to last. In fact, it's down this morning. So, that's a concern.
Down this weekend.
Yeah. So, you know, another one is what I call resiliency. And we'll talk about that some other time. We've got a lot of people ready to retire, and we're bringing in a new system, we're going to move. We could lose a lot of people here. And so, we need to do some things to stack this up. And the third, obviously, is to meet our statutory mandates. We absolutely have to meet our statutory mandates. You'll be getting some documents from me in the near future. So, anyway, I do support the project. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, and let him give you a little bit more in-depth understanding. Thank you.
Okay. And before we turn it over to Tim, Bill, I just wanted to say thank you very much. You've gone into a very difficult situation, to put it lightly, and done a lot already, and been our eyes and ears down there. Obviously, you've just given us a good overview of what we're going to be discussing today, which is the most important project in the assessor's office. And again, I just want to, you know, on behalf of the entire board, thank you for everything that you've done already. And also, I want to thank everyone, and Tim, and everyone else in the assessor's office, for your cooperation with Bill. It's been, you know, of course, we would have expected nothing else, and that's exactly what we've gotten. So, really, that's a testament to everyone involved.
Thank you.
So, Bill, thanks so much. Unless anyone from the board has a question for Bill, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Turn it over to Tim. Thanks for being here.
Jim? Switch.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Sure. Thank you for having me here today. My name's Raj Sandhu. I'm the project manager at Esri Canada for the Mars project.
Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Eric Vales. I'm the chief technology officer for the Office of the Assessor.
And good morning. I'm Jeff Tompkins. I'm project consultant.
Thanks for being here, Jeff.
Okay, Mr. Chairman members, I'm going to walk you through this quick agenda of the project, you know, why Mars, the capabilities of Mars, a short video that's narrated by Mr. Holland, our functional leader here, kind of the history of the project, the nature of the contract, and the change order, and then the project finances. So, hopefully, this will meet all your needs that we've discussed, Mr. Chairman. So, why Mars? Director Wiley hit everything earlier, 64 Chevy analogy is spot on. And the technology that we are developing is infinitely better than anything in the current marketplace for assessment and evaluation. It's kind of like a pane of glass. So, the Mars project takes all of these functions that we currently have and puts them in one framework. And this is something that the chairman had seen before. So, we have intuitive map interfaces, support the GIS platform, we reduce errors and data input for our staff, we facilitate remote access, and we track work, things that we currently do not have today. It's also in the cloud. So, it'll be able to allow us to do mobile operations and handle the growth of the county. As we get 400 people, you know, a day moving here, we'll be able to have a system that'll last for the next 20 years. So, our results should be faster and more accurate for those property owners. We have a short video I'd like to show you. Whoa. Right now.
This walkthrough documents the system's process of listing and revaluing a parcel with the current Assessor VI and the Mars system. If our staff currently has to list changes to a parcel and revalue that parcel, first, staff searches for the location of the parcel on the assessor's public-facing website. Staff then conducts a field visit. After the field visit, staff accesses the current Assessor VI system and edits the sketch through the system, and then changes the characteristics of the property. Staff then opens an application called CART and accesses a calculation spreadsheet in Excel and reenters the changes to the parcel and generates a new value. However, the LPV, the limited property value, would need to be calculated by hand. Next, back in a different screen in Assessor VI, staff enters a manual override of the valuation to complete the process. In the Mars system process, staff searches for the location of a parcel from within the Mars system. Staff then conducts a field visit. After the field visit, staff accesses the Mars system and edits the sketch in the system, and then changes the characteristics of the property. Then, still in the Mars system, staff can select the valuations tab, press the value button, and the system will recalculate the valuation of the property without having to reenter any data. This includes the limited property value and assessed values. In summary, in the current Assessor VI process, staff needs to access three separate applications, VI twice at separate times, in order to enter changes and revalue a property with multiple reentering of data. In Mars, all of the previous separate applications are connected in the Mars system and eliminate the reentry of data multiple times.
So, that's just one business process that happens hundreds of times a day. So, you can see the efficiency of the software that we're building. So, a quick history of the project. We had the build versus buy recommendation in 2013. The board approved the project in the capital appropriations in 2013. Then, we named the project Mars. In 2014, we awarded the initial contract to Vision Government Solutions. In 2016, the board signed the contract to Esri Canada. Since then, we've come to you three different times with budget requests for this project and gave you updates, in particular, the fall of '17, on the status of the project. So, the nature of the contract and why we...
Tim, real quick.
Yep.
Again, thanks for providing the project. I just, for a historical perspective, we changed midstream.
Correct.
Changed horses midstream.
Right.
So, back on your previous slide, 2014, we award the contract to Vision Government Solutions. And I do remember coming in and saying, now we have a problem, you know, a couple of years, two years later.
In '16.
Right. How much was spent at that time with that project?
Six million.
Six million dollars. And was any of that project now folded, any of that six million dollars per se, folded into the Esri system? Or was that something now that's on a shelf and we just can't use it?
You guys might have to help me here. I believe we have all of the code in escrow?
We do.
Okay. And we have all of the business processes that were mapped in that project. We gave all of that information. So, all of the, if you will, soft work, before they started modifying their system, we gave all that stuff to Esri Canada to help build it.
So, was that been used as a building block for Esri? I mean, was that, did that provide value to Esri with this system? Or is that still on the shelf?
The requirements that were taken by Vision were used to, as a point to build on for requirements for what we built as well.
Would Esri have utilized six million dollars to get to that point?
I don't have the answer to that, to be honest. I don't.
Okay.
I would have to look into the analysis of that.
The technical strategy between the Esri Canada-based approach and the Vision-based approach is remarkably different. So, the original contract was to modify commercial off-the-shelf planning. And the Esri approach is, we are the launch customer, we will be a commercial off-the-shelf. So, the code that's in escrow at Iron Mountain right now is not directly translatable to what is reusable.
I just wanted to know, sometimes this is building block knowledge that, hey, this was great. At least we don't have to put that much money into it. But if it's not being used, then it's on the shelf.
The code base is not terribly useful. The system use cases and business use cases that we got out of the Vision era were useful as long as it was on the shelf.
I think if you would come up to the microphone, otherwise you can pick that up. Thank you. Yeah, bring your chair up.
So, just to summarize, some of the soft material in terms of requirements and documentation and kind of stuff was reusable, but the hard aspect of the coding and those kinds of things were not, it was completely reworn by Esri.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. And again, why did we go with Esri Canada? Because they took over the contract that was with Vision. So, we already, Esri already had a roadmap to build this. We had used the Assessment Analyst product, and they have a 90% presence in the U.S. for GIS, including all of our county departments. So, the difference, Eric just hit on it a little bit, between how we were working with Vision and how we were working with Esri Canada, is that this was an agile build. So, each one of the 12 releases, we would consent to the next release. Requirements were developed as we went. It was not a traditional waterfall in that you had a product, you modified the product, and then you tested the product. We were doing the testing all the way along the last two and a half years. And then frequent development. And as we would get the releases, we would test it and then show it to our staff through multiple different ways to get them ready for the big go-live. Why do we need PCR four? So, we've done three contract amendments already. So, why do we need the fourth one? First off, this date, July of 2020, is not in any contract that the county has. So, by doing this contract, we will put it in writing that the February go-live is there. When we went with the go-live product, we were looking at from January of this year to July of '20, kind of a two-phased approach. So, in our executive steering committees, we've always committed to having a product in July of '20, and then additional releases and testing after that initial go-live. In our calendar for the assessor's office, we really only have two times where there's a window to get the entire staff totally, totally, 100% trained up. And then, if you will, turn off the old system, which is after we send a tax roll to the treasurer in the summer, which is the July number, or when we send the notices of value to all 1.7 property owners. So, those are the two windows we have.
So, Tim, let me ask you about that. So, you said the July 2020 date wasn't in the contract?
Correct.
With Esri, when was the first time that that commitment was made from, by the assessor's office?
Initially, when we entered into the contract and they took the assignment, we said we would finish the releases, they would finish the releases at the end of '20, and we would take six months of testing and training. And if we found any additional bugs or anything like that, we would do a break-fix before we went live with the entire staff. So, right from the get-go. And that's where, you know, the management incentives, to myself, were first initiated three years ago.
Okay. So, in late, early, what is that, early?
'16.
Probably like '16.
Yeah.
That moralization that you, of the two phases, in January 2019, something was said or something was talked about. Who was that said and talked about to? I mean, was that a presentation made to OET or our board or Joy or just between Esri and you guys? Or who was that?
Well, obviously, it started between Esri and us. As we looked at the amount of work and the likelihood that we could go live in July of 2020. And we came to the realization in January that we would need to define what in the agile method is known as a minimum viable product, we rename that to a go-live product. And that we would need subsequent releases. In the executive steering committee meeting that we held in January, and that was to explain the release we would receive in December, we talked about there is likely a need for a phased implementation, and we will go live on a go-live product that had not been defined at that point in time. And that, after July, there would be some functionality we would need to bring into production before the end of '20. That was spoken of theoretically. We did not have the entire backlog of work that had been categorized into what we needed to go live and what could come in afterwards. But we had started doing that work. So, it was mentioned, I won't say completely passing, but we had just introduced the notion that we made the phase implementation.
So, that was in January of '19. We had another steering committee meeting after we got the release in April. We had another meeting in July and another meeting in the fall. So, in June, the release from July and the release in the fall were less than expected. We thought we were going to get this level of effort the director talked about, would be at a certain level. And I have the slide that I shared with you, Mr. Chairman, in a second. It was less than we had expected. So, that we had two releases, the summer and the fall, were less than expected. Finally, in August of '19, the business analysts that worked for Raj said, okay, this is the scope. This is the level of effort we need to have viable products. And the level of work is greater than they anticipated. So, they estimated two years when they took over the contract, how much work was to be done. Now, they finally put pen to paper and to math and said, it's more than we have. So, one of two things. At that point, for software contracts, people come to you and ask for more money, or they do what we're doing, asking for more time. 95% of the things before you is asking for more money. And you know that very well. We're asking for more time. In September, we realized the go-live product would not be reached. Even if we did, the PCR four changes, we wouldn't have that complete. Even if we did, the PCR four changes, we wouldn't have that completed. Now, our consultant can verify to the fact that everything that we have gotten from Esri Canada has been of good quality. So when I talk about the slide I shared with the chairman's office, this is the slide. So that blue line is where we needed to be at with that bar chart. We needed to, to hit that amount of effort to have the viable go-live product available to our staff. And when that didn't happen in July, and then it got lower in September, there was no way. And in fact, Mr. Tompkins was going to meet with the assessor on October ninth to tell him, ironically, to tell him that. Okay. So, so really, the velocity of the build had gone down. However, Esri Canada defined what was needed for everything that we had in the contract. And that led to the decision, we need to push out the date, rather than come for you to ask for more money.
Okay. So can I, do you have anything else on that slide?
Um, I just have, this is just, this is like golf, this is like, lower is better on this one, right?
Right. So can we go back then, so to that slide?
Yes.
So I think we have, when we met, you gave me that slide with some notes on it. So I just want to ask you about that, so we, so we understand how this kind of develops. So is that, can we put that up now? Okay. So this is the same slide?
Yes.
Is that right?
Exact same slide.
Okay. So I just wanted to ask you about this. So the, the first one where there's writing on there that says worried, that's fourth, is that the fourth quarter of twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. So what, can you explain, what does that mean, worried?
That the velocity of the build. I mean, Jeff, you want to answer that?
Yeah, we, we, the project was not consuming story points or building quickly enough to complete the entire project by July. So we began talking about a bifurcated go-live. Minimum viable product, followed by successive, uh, delivery cycle. So the work began on that at that time.
And was this something, now you said there was going to be a meeting on October ninth where you explained the status of the project to the assessor. That was in twenty nineteen. Was the assessor aware of this? Was he involved in these discussions?
Yes, he was. He was aware of the velocity and the general, you know, condition of the project. We were still operating under a go-live in July twenty twenty, so that's the project directive. So the analytical work and the effort was all about trying to get that go-live. How can we do that, still have a decent product, you know, not destroy the department with bad software and a go-live? Until we had the entire effort defined, which didn't really occur until August of this year, we can't really definitively make this statement that we're not going fast enough, or at least predict or project that completion. So two things, you look at velocity, and you look at what I call the pile of work, how much should we have to do? So those two things became very clear in this summer.
Okay. And I wanted to ask Ed, so Ed, were you involved at, at this point in these discussions, or had you gotten involved, maybe you can talk about your involvement?
Yeah, sure, sure. So, so, um, I think there's a point here, and we may come back to it around, how this information was portrayed to the executive steering committee. That was really my only involvement, to the executive steering committee. And so if there were internal discussions going on around the potential impact to the project, that was really not conveyed that way to the steering committee. The steering committee was informed that there would be a go-live version with follow-on work, that is, that's accurate, and that's the way it was described. So, so that was the way it was described, that we're going to have to decide on, you know, what functionality, what's this minimum viable product for July, and then we have follow-on work. So if there was other perspectives that this was really not going to happen, or there were difficulties in delivery of that, that wasn't conveyed to the steering committee. So we had little opportunity to intervene or to, to probe that at the time.
So Tim, can you talk about, given these concerns, can you talk from your perspective, what actions you and or the assessor took to address these concerns?
We've had numerous conversations with Raj's superiors at Esri Canada. I've talked personally to Michael Lomax numerous times about increasing velocity, getting more staff for Raj, so that they can complete this. In September, when we were, when we had, September of twenty nineteen, after we got the indication that that bar was going down for the September release. We met in Niagara Falls, Canada, as a, as a team, and the assessor went to Toronto to meet with the owner of Esri Canada, to basically say, look, to give your team more resources to complete this, because we want this done in July.
And what did you learn from your meeting in Niagara Falls? Was the assessor there?
The assessor was there, yes.
And that was, what, September nineteenth?
September nineteen, yes.
And what, what was the takeaway from that?
And the ownership and the executive leader of Esri Canada said they would get more resources and do the best they can, and I believe now, finally, here we are in December, that that's a true fact.
I'll just jump in there a little bit. So where it says PCR, does it say worried?
PCR needed.
PCR needed, okay. At the end of, or after the worried part of the end of twenty eighteen, is when we all really committed to verifying and validating the, the effort needed to complete this project. And so throughout this year, while we have been developing, we have shifted some of our resources to ensure that we were able to define the backlog and have the effort estimated. And while we were developing, that effort was increasing at a higher rate. Now, that said, there was a need for resources, I, I agree with that. We started hiring resources in, in that timeframe, but it took, it took time to get them up to speed. The other thing is, going back to the project quality, we committed to the assessor throughout the project, and again, we confirmed in January that effort, or sorry, that quality was going to be prioritized very high. We did not want to jeopardize quality for moving too fast in this project. And so some of the releases in twenty nineteen suffered a little bit as a result, because we wanted to ensure, uh, a good quality part of the process, hopefully, to us. And that's just some of the background there. These resources now are, are here, they're trained up, the velocity is now going the other way, or sorry, the, the completion rate is now going the other way, so we're happy to report that, just a little bit of background.
Tim, so this is not going to cost us a single penny? Chairman Gates, Mr. Chukuri, it's not going to cost us a penny more on the contract. In fact, we have this net present value calculation, there's like a seventy-six thousand dollar change reduction over the twenty years.
So what I take that to mean is that neither vendor, no vendor is going to charge us more than the lead, incidentally, certainly. That the discrepancy that happened this weekend, that you somehow handicapped the assessor's side, because I went to the site and had problems pulling up parcels, that that is not going to cost the county any money. We are not going to have to spend additional dollars, because time is money to me. And now you are saying you're pushing out in the language, to some degree, I understand. But we're pushing out this project, and it's going to be more time using the same system. And so what I take that to mean is that, when you say no more money, not only on the vendor's side, but we, as Mayor of the County and the assessor's office, will not need to spend any more dollars to keep the current system operating.
There will be a cost to keep the current system operating.
Okay, so it is costing us money.
It would not on this contract.
Had this been done according to plan, but we would be spending more money to keep the existing system.
Correct.
And what, what do we anticipate that costs for you?
On the project?
To keep the existing system going until the new project is done.
Okay, that would be in the operating slide.
If you, if you're going to get this, Tim, I don't want to buy into it.
You, you just got there. So it will cost us two hundred and two thousand dollars to maintain the Oracle system for another six months. We were going to turn that off, okay, and put it in, you know, like sleep mode in case we just need to query it. So it would cost one hundred eighty-two, we'd save one hundred eighty-two thousand on that Oracle contract by putting our six I system to sleep. So there is that cost for that additional six months.
What about staff costs? Is that, is that more, is that more mechanical in the sense of having to purchase things to, to band-aid the current system going, or is that two hundred?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chukuri, there, there is no staff cost. That, the people we have are the people we have. On the project, there is a six-month cost, seven hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. That's for the project team. So that's five people, Steve, Tim, who are there on the project.
But that's where you can't.
And we have, and we have contractors. So to maintain those contractors, there is a cost. But in our project, we have project contingency for things like this. That is why I am confident and can tell you that we, in this project, at the end, in twenty twenty-two, will give money back to the capital fund. We will not spend everything that's there.
So how much do we think that, that has cost for you?
Seven hundred and nine.
The seven oh nine.
Seven oh nine.
Plus the two hundred in sum, or is that?
Correct. Plus the two oh two.
So we're talking about a million dollars?
Roughly.
But that million dollars is in contingency. And how much do we have in contingency for this project?
Two point one.
So we're spending fifty percent of our contingency. So it is costing us money. And I think we have to be honest with each other when, when we say that. And Tim, this isn't a disrespect to you, because I, I think you really, you and the office have tried, have been trying, first of all, recognizing we need this, right? And you've seen what's happened in other departments in the county, where we've had major projects go south and having to bring other folks on. And I think you've done a good job in trying to protect against that. However, I want to make sure we're being honest with each other when we say it's not costing us money, it really is. It's costing us another million dollars. And so in the business world, we always go back and say, why is it costing us this million dollars? And if it's Israel not, is re, not, not putting resources, using their words, that they should have, and, and Mr. Peterson needing to go to Canada to, to, to meet with the CEO, then, then we should hope they may be accountable. So, so all I want to make sure of is, it's the three gentlemen sitting here, look, we don't choose this. We don't choose to sit here and be the devoting body. This is in the constitution. We choose to by running for this office. So we have a producer responsibility. So we're not trying to take anyone to the woodchick, but we are, at the end of the day, the ministerial arm that has to govern these projects. And if we were oversold by way of timeline, which I understand, I, I don't understand IT, but I can understand the complicated nature of IT and how things can get waylaid and take in more time. But as, as bringing a business mindset to government, as I've said for seven years now, as everyone's tired of hearing, we say, those folks should be held accountable if they have to take a haircut because they did not provide the product on the necessary timeline. Then we should go to them and see that through. And I'm not trying to yell at anybody, but I hope you can understand, we're looking at this merely as, as not carrots and sticks, but as what is the true cost, because there is one. And how do we defray that cost if the commitment was not honored in the time period we expected it to, on one of our subcontractors?
Sorry. Yes, I, I appreciate those comments, and I, I understand where you're coming from, absolutely. And I'm here for, for a lot of reasons. One, to answer your questions. The other, to, to say to you that we're committed at Esri Canada to get this done. Absolutely, I'm personally committed to get it done. When, since I've been here, the scope, or the, the effort associated with this project has increased by fifty-five percent. During that time, we've been working with the county, we've, we've never said that we, we're not ever asking for more money.
So Raj, you're saying we, we kind of moved the goalpost a few times on you, as far as the scope?
We did it together.
Saying that one thing that gets another?
We did it together, and I'm not, I, I'm not sitting here, I would never sit here and lay blame on the, the assessor's office. I'm just saying, when this contract, we took assignment of it, we went through all the requirements, and as we, we wanted to, because we didn't have time to go through all the requirements initially and then start to develop, we went through the requirements and developed at the same time we did it out.
Right.
And so when we're doing that, you don't have an accurate scope of the effort. And now we have an accurate scope of the effort, and the pile is a lot bigger than we originally thought it would be. But we believe that we need to do this to give you guys a quality part of you. And we didn't want to say is, okay, it's gone up fifty-five percent, we're not going to build that fifty-five percent, because that wasn't what we originally thought it was going to be. We said, we want to build that, because we want to give you a quality system. And I think we both, both parties agreed to do that. We're asking for a little bit more time.
So Raj?
Yes.
With that being said, are there any other unintended consequences, or do you find, do you feel as though now between the assessor's office and all of you, that we have our arms around this, and we're not going to come back in six months and say, hey, we just discovered this or that? And now it's going to delay us even longer, which, by the way, will add costs. So maybe now we're only at one million of our contingency, but that grows to one point five million with the two point one.
No, I, I, it's a very good question, and I, I believe we have our arms around it, as you said. I'm, I'm confident we can get this done in the, the new timeline. We've done a lot of work to base the new timeline on reasonable estimates for each release, to ensure we're not going to over, overpromise. The, the project team and our team at Esri Canada have worked together over the last, over the last two years, but really hard in the last few months to define this and ensure that the dates work both for the assessor calendar and for our development. So yes, I am confident that we have our arms wrapped around it, and we can deliver this go-live by February twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed?
To that point, if, if we weren't able to make February twenty twenty-one, the next window would be July twenty twenty-one, right? Because of the assessor operations, because we have a new data. I wanted to follow up on the comments about costs, very insightful, you're giving that this is what I should read. They're calling out additional costs for the project team, for some, it's seven hundred thousand dollars. That, that can be accommodated in the project contingency, and then this additional cost for the current system, maintenance and so on, to be, to be accounted for in their, in their budget request, their operating budget. So when you add those up, that's the, that's the additional cost of the go-live. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, again, thank you for providing this, because it's hard not to jump ahead of you. I'm, I'm waiting to get to the part about the training. Where our company has put in a, a new software program, and much like always on strange, you know, egg companies, people are dying to get into that business with software changes. I kind of see this a little bit too, I mean, assessor's office, but there's more assessor's office than egg farms, if you can believe it, around the country. So we've had delays before. So I was expect, you know, we should expect those types of things. We're seeing it in other, as Supervisor Chukuri, we see it in other forms and fashion. But one thing I know is, the training part is extremely important. You're talking about brain drain from the old system retirements versus new. Who's going to provide, because I think in the contract, there was, there was months of training with Esri people as, to implement the system? I see us dipping into that training time. Do, do you? I think your slide says as much, that now we're going to go and shove that into the, the new assessor's office, per se, with new people?
The, the.
Because that's going to be a cost, no matter how you slice it too, that wasn't there. And I was just wondering, in the last contract, I think that Esri was going to participate in that, in this new possibility, there might be training costs incurred by the county and not.
With, with PCR four, we have looked thematically at pivoting some of the effort so that Esri Canada can concentrate on what Esri Canada must deliver, and that's developing software. That is not something that the assessor's office can do organically. In order to accommodate that pivot...
In order to accommodate that pivot, we have looked at, well, what can we unburden from Ezri Canada that we can take on that would provide us additional advantage? So, the original contract anticipated we're buying an off-the-shelf system that comes with package training, right? And they will, you know, customize that training for our particular situation and deliver it. Ezri Canada is building a system from scratch, basically, using Enterprise G data. We are looking at developing that training ourselves with them serving as advisors. And so, we're developing that organic training capability so that not only are we more familiar with our own business processes and how this supports it, but given the attrition rate of the assessor's office, we anticipate we'll need to deliver training repeatedly over time. And we will be able to do that without the vendor participating, without having to pay the vendor to do that after they have delivered the project itself.
So, not paying the vendor to do that. But are you taking the contract costs that we've applied to that six months of training? And are we putting it now into software?
The effort is being put into software, right? And the project team is developing the training. In fact, we have a version of the training plan for the release.
Okay, so now, my next question. So, now, we're gonna do the training. And this is an important piece of software used for the first time in a very large municipality. Okay. My thoughts, and you guys then get to sell that module as a company. And that's why you guys were enticed to come in also, right? 'Cause this is gonna be a brand-new, possible off-the-shelf that other communities can purchase, correct? That's why you guys?
The product itself?
Yeah, the product itself. Wouldn't Ezri want to participate into that training? 'Cause you're gonna have to take that training that we all learn together. And you're gonna have to put it into Portland, Oregon, or, I'm sorry, Kern County, California, say.
Good question. Now, to be clear, there's only the two types of training when you're looking at a system like this. One is end-user training, right? That's the stuff that the county is proposing to take on, the end-user training. That's specific to Maricopa. 'Cause as we're building the system for Maricopa County, we're using specific business processes that Maricopa County uses to assess properties. And so, for us to take on that training is, it's possible. It's just very difficult because it's very specific to how they do business here. Now, the system administrator user training in terms of how the system works isn't something that we're asking them to take on. It's something that we're going to need to build, something that we will share with them and then with other customer subs. But the end-user training itself wouldn't be something that we would take to?
So, that administrative training, is that gonna come to a cost later down the road to when we get the system to go live? Or is that still part of this?
It's part of the project.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so, for example, you know, the steps needed to create an assessment role, right? That's an administrative process that any assessment office would have to do. However, how to operate legal class verification, that's specific to us.
Okay. Was that training originally in the contract that you were going to do the end-user training?
The assignment of the contract to us included training to be developed and delivered by the vendor.
Will we ever get that cost accrued back? I consider this as a part where somebody in the assessor's office is gonna learn a new system that can go to different counties. Sorry, just kinda guarding against this. This is brain capital that this county's gonna pay for. Does that mean we'll now have a whole batch of consultants that can go fan out? We lose them from our county? I'm just thinking, because I can see that happening, that we're gonna have a brain drain from this type of training that will then be able to fan out. Is that gonna happen, Tim? Quite possibly? I mean, that's the economics of business.
That's, I have no idea. Do you guys have any?
I'm just hoping we can accrue that cost back, 'cause we're gonna be throwing some more money at this.
I'll just offer a couple of comments. I come from an assessment background. I worked for 15 years as a deputy assessor in Canada. I've done training like this before at EC Assessment in Canada. And end-user training is very, very specific to the end-user.
Okay.
You're getting, you're going to get input from your subject matter experts, you know, your appraisal staff, your administrative staff, as to detailed steps that are documented and for people to walk through that. I think it's going to be very specific to this county. I think the risks that you're talking about there are quite low.
Okay.
My opinion, but I believe they are quite low.
Okay. Very good. All right. Just don't lose people.
Okay. Thank you. Tim? Need to walk through the costs again, or are we good?
Any other questions on the costs?
What's your confidence level now in these costs? You suggest now that you have the scope well-defined. You know, we know, you know what it's gonna take in terms of your activity and your resources to deliver. You know, how confident are you? How confident is the assessor's office in this revised schedule and these revised cost projections?
I'm quite confident. We essentially kept, we have the effort to do this project. We've built in a little bit of contingency just to ensure, you know, something comes up that we built for them. Based on the projections of the release that's happening right now, with the resources that we have in place, we look to be able to exceed what we have planned going forward. So, like I said earlier, the effort estimates are very realistic, they're attainable. And I'm very confident that we'll be able to reach the go-live product in February.
You know, we showed that chart with the orange bars. Are we positioning this thing, you know, twice that to get this done? Or are we saying, "Hey, you know, we're gonna be operating at kind of where we were delivering with this extra time now. We're gonna be able to get that extra work done." Or we're not looking for a miracle to occur, where we gotta have three times the effort in half the time?
Very good question. So, that chart there shows around 800 story points, which is another way to say effort in software development. What we've said we could do is 640.
I'd just like to add on that, and that's based on history. That's, we're observing history. We have a long track record now, so the future estimates are not rote.
Now, in addition to that, I think it's important to mention, part of PCR four re-engineers the finances to put additional motivation on staying in pace. And though I wanted to use the term penalty, I'm advised by our council that withheld retainage is the proper term. So that we have specific wickets that they need to get through each of the releases they propose. And if they don't make it at 100% of the plan that they have proposed, that some of the retainage at the end of the project disappears. So, we have financial motivation in each one of the releases we bore that we did not have previously. Furthermore, we haven't paid anything for development since the delivery of the low-ball release in September. So, I refuse to accept that until this PCR has come through. Tim?
Mr. Chairman, so PCR four, let's go-live date, does the schedule with certainty, has the accountability features for each one of the releases, penalties that Eric just talked about, does not add to the overall contract, however, it does consume project contingency and does delay some of the operational efficiencies. So, originally, this was Agenda Item 19. And then, Agenda Item 58 was a reduction of the 308,000 that was in there for maintenance of the software. That can be eliminated immediately out of our budget. But I believe both of those items are on an addendum. Is that correct? Secretary? So, again, the bottom line, no additional vendor costs. However, project contingencies are consumed, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chukuri. And we delay some of the operational efficiencies. And in conclusion, you know, this hurts me more than anybody, right? That we have to delay this, okay? 'Cause I really wanted to see this go live next year. So, we'll be going live as the vendor just said and as our consultants just said. All indications are we won't be back. Granted, I will not be back, how's that?
Okay.
To ask you for any other delays or additional resources.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just one thing. And granted, I think along with Mr. Chukuri, I'm not a tech guy. I couldn't tell you how all this works and so on. We rely on the recommendation of the assessor and the assessor's leadership to kind of point us in the right direction. And we followed your lead. We followed the assessor's lead on a couple of occasions, and then we've been tripped up. And now, you're asking us to follow you again. This is the reason why Ed and the whole steering committee, they're pretty much our eyes and ears. They kind of point us in the right direction as well, giving us recommendations. And when they're not fully included in this whole project, when he has the types of questions he has, it's alarming. It tells me that they're being left out in the dark. That kind of really irritates me. It really does. Because the one group that's in charge of representing this board in this project is not being included. The types of questions he just asked, he asked only maybe four or five questions, questions he should never have had to ask. He should already know this stuff, which tells me he's being left out of the dark. Or the whole steering committee is not being included. So, you know, it's alarming that we, let's be honest, we're gonna have a different leadership team, I'm assuming. Let's be real. We're gonna have a different leadership team come January 2021. Okay, the election, let's be real. So, how is this gonna happen? How is this gonna look like? I mean, these are the things that we need to take into consideration. It is critical that Ed and that steering committee is part of every decision that is being made. That's the reason why they're there. And when they're asking these types of questions, it's not good. It's not good. How is someone like myself, who's not a techy, supposed to take this into consideration? How am I supposed to make these type of decisions when the folks that we entrusted to be our eyes and ears are left out in the dark? So, just to fill that out.
Mr. Chairman, why did that happen? Why was it, Mr. Wood? Why was that?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chukuri, steering committee, that every quarter. We committed to having all the chiefs there. They were given all the material, given all the briefings, and have access to the project files. They were there. I mean, do you guys wanna?
I think in this instance, the issue of timing of the decision that we could delay the go-live date may have played a role in that recommendation was not accepted by the administration until mid-October. And the steering committee meeting was November 4. So, let me follow up on that. When was this suggestion made to leadership that this July 2020 was not gonna be doable? It had been talked about in scenario analysis over the course of the summer, since about August. But it wasn't until, I believe, Monday, October 14th, where the project team asked seriously to be allowed to move the go-live date.
Did you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that the effort of the project up until mid-summer 19 or the end of summer 19 was to try to make that. So, they were analyzing, shuffling requirements, doing everything they could to try to meet that date because it was very clear that was the date we're gonna go live. So, the operational impact of that was, make that date. Until it just, until we finally got that pile, as we're calling it, fully defined and fully understood velocity, you couldn't make the judgment, you couldn't really fight that go-live date effectively to the end of the fact. So, everything was about developing that effort and that understanding. So, as soon as that happened, that's when I was gonna meet with the assessor in October. That was what that was all about. It was what, they aren't gonna make it. The alternative is worse, which is a crummy product and bad values, you know, invalidated and so forth. So, that's really how.
Two friends are sellers?
I guess the thing that troubles me about this is why it took so many years for us to figure out we had a problem. And to me, at least, some of that is because there's such a shortage of expertise in the IT world. And as I listen to different groups, from McKinley come to me with different IT things they're working on. I wonder why we don't have a central IT group that really is controlling all the projects.
Ed, did you feel that you were left in the dark? Or that you should have done more than you did?
Just on, you know, what I'm seeing in terms of the timeline of when there was concern around the real delivery of the product, that was really not conveyed to the steering committee in a way, as I mentioned, it was more about focusing on the July 2020 go-live. So, I think as we start to look at this way we're managing these technology projects, this technology health check process that we brokered to Joy and support to the board, you know, we're starting to use that. I think that there's probably, you know, we've kind of envisioned that on a quarterly basis. But I think in terms of just understanding projects and the activities and the progress of projects, we probably need to do at least our involvement with these large projects to more on a monthly basis, if not more, just to get an assessment of how things are going and then be able to course correct as appropriate. So, while we may report on a quarterly basis, I think we're gonna need to broker these relationships. As you know, we're doing the treasure project. We're already in a monthly basis with the treasure. You need to think about something like that here or two to get better insight into offering the technical guidance you can. So, if I reflect on the whole thing, I think we potentially have lost an opportunity. I don't know, you know, when you have a situation where you're really dependent on a vendor to deliver software, it's a tricky situation, it's difficult, they can't develop the software appropriately. What kind of held to that? But I do think, you know, if we're gonna get into this kind of governance, we need to be, you know, involved and very open and honest about where these things are having trouble and what's our ability to influence them.
To that point, Mr. Chairman, I would highly recommend that the construct of the assessor's office, we all know, has changed dramatically. That's not a commentary on the staff or you, Mr. Moncassini, at all. It's a reality, though, that we're living in today. And with that being said, whether there are quarterly meetings of the executive committee and steering committee and everyone else, I think whatever that construct was and the time it was put in place is far different than the world we're living in today as it relates to the Maricopa County Assessor's Office. So, with that being said, I think that dynamic needs to change. And Mr. and Ed needs to be a part of that. And we need to ramp up the communication, because it could very well be different to Mr. Harold's point in 2021. And I don't wanna be back here saying, "Hey, listen, you gotta spend the rest of our contingency." I agree, and I like it. We can withhold funds, and there's a penalty, and it is the old carrot and stick analysis. But that's not gonna be good enough. We have to spend more money. And we're back here in six months saying, "Well, we thought this, this, and this." I think Ed, you need to be intimately involved, as well as this committee more so than you have in the past, given what the future implies ahead. And what do we expect this whole go-live date to be? I think you must see different people in the assessor's office.
I'm looking at Kevin about procurement code and contracts. Kind of gives me a little, I don't, I hate hearing the carrot-stick approach. I'm talking to Tim, but I'm also talking to Ezri. But I'm trying to look at you, because you're the guy that talks, you guys are the guys that talks to the contractor that's doing the job. Tim, I'm assuming that you feel you're like you're, with this and happening in this atmosphere, you might feel like you're a little bit under the hot seat, I'm hoping, on the hot seat? Are you? Is your staff?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hickman, absolutely.
Okay, great. Now, with Ezri, you're representing your company, and you just heard something. Do you guys feel like you're a little bit on the hot seat?
Absolutely.
Was the topic of withholding money if this doesn't go live? And now, we're delaying it. Was that talked to with the owner of Ezri or the owner of you guys? Because now, I'm putting on my risk management hat, Kevin, because I see these lawsuits that come down the pike. Well, so, I don't wanna jeopardize the county and the county taxpayer. I just want you to know that, hey, yeah, we heard you guys loud and clear, and we accept that. You know, if you're here to accept that possibility. So, I don't have to worry about changes. And in two years, now we're at risk management saying, "What went wrong?" And now, we have this lawsuit because we're withholding money. I don't want it to happen.
All levels of leadership, from our director to our general manager to our ownership, are aware of the term contract. You may be quite aware of it. It's all been, you're always aware.
But the stack, in your words, changed. You said, "Maybe..." You said maybe there was a 55% stack, and now we're aware that there's a 90% stack, but we're putting resources and everything to it. Does that include that part of the stack now?
That, that's the stack that we're focusing on, that, in the scope of work.
Scope of work.
That scope of work is now being clearly defined, agreed to, planned out in a realistic way. Both parties are confident that, that the vendor can, can, that can do that, the requirements can come from the subject matter experts, and we can deliver this type of, of Go Live.
Next thing, we skipped over a slide, total Mars estimated operating cost. We, I don't know if we hit that. We're going to cloud-based, right? Storage?
Yes.
The other one was, was hard computing?
Yes.
Are those, are those real costs now that we need to be aware of? Request over baseline, a, a total of $1 million?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hickman, that was the original contract? We would have been asking for $1 million. We will be coming in with a 21 budget, asking you for 463,000, 263,000 for the maintenance and an estimated 200,000 for the cloud computing. That contract is to be let in the future.
You know, with the subscription services, I, I get a little banged about on my iCloud and my thing about always doing more mon, more money to that, would it?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hickman, I don't know. I leave that up to Ed and to Eric to figure that out.
Yeah, excellent question. It's something we're going to need to make sure we're managing while we're going forward. And Eric is very student, very well educated in cloud, but it is something we need to make sure we're monitoring and managing, that we don't end up with some kind of unmake loss on this. And part of that will be, you know, how is the system being used? Are we, are we archiving where we can, you know, keeping it under control? What happens with some of these cloud systems is everyone thinks it's just, you know, unlimited storage and, and, and compute power, but then they get the bill at the end of the month, they go, oh my gosh, we didn't realize. So I just think so, we're going to need to manage on a monthly basis.
Yeah, the, the estimates that we've used for the cloud subscription are based on Esri's Canada, Esri Canada's experience in development and extrapolating those. Now, they have more environments that they're using for development than we would have in production, okay? Because they have different developers using different environments for different things. But we have looked at tools that can be used to manage costs, to be aware of costs and strategies, such as parking the system over weekends, those sorts of things that can really break down, you know, compute and storage and network costs for the cloud. We have not gotten to the point where we need to make those decisions yet, and everything else being equal, the later on we make those decisions, the more accurate they're going to come out to be, but at the same time, we need to get a, a production subscription up and running so that we have the experience and the governance for that instance, ready to go before we go.
One other thing I just kind of wanted to quickly address and just make clear, because I knew, Tim, you made the comment about, well, the chiefs were invited to these meetings and Ed was invited to these meetings, but, I mean, you know, this was the most important project, certainly from the board's perspective as it relates to your office. You had a manager, you have a management incentive, incentive payments based upon a Go Live date in July 2020, and it's actually, says July 2017 completing December 2019. So we're in December 2019, and there were clearly concerns, worried, right, back in the fourth quarter of, of 2018. So again, I would say, you know, this was your responsibility. You took it on, the assessor came to us and asked for us to structure this system so that we could hit these dates. So we talked about it not being in the contract. I mean, it was, it was a commitment that was made to us. So again, to kind of reiterate what was said before, we need to know about these things earlier. And again, I, you know, this is a very unusual circumstance we're in right now. But the first time I heard about this was October 21st, and you and I were talking about where the assessor was. Okay? So again, we can't, not looking to beat you up on this, but to make it clear that this, we're disappointed here. I mean, we are. And we, we can't, we can't do this again. The incentive, was the incentive paid?
No, not for, we thought Go Live.
Okay.
The first two year.
Okay, so when was the second payment paid?
December.
January, I think.
Okay. 29th?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there was a memo from the assessor to the finance minister in January asking.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think what you're saying is, we have to keep everyone honest. And no sleight of hand, these are taxpaying funds, dates were set, and these, these are videotaped for a reason, guys, right? So today's being videotaped, and I don't want to go back a year and a half from now when we're saying, and Raj, I get the scope of work, I do get that. I, I think that maybe that's part of our fault, of the assessor's fault, for not understanding that better at the outset of this. But also, in their defense, some of these things kind of come up as the dialogue in the discovery that happens. But I couldn't agree more with the chairman. We see dates in this contract, we're asked for incentive increases, we went along with it, and it's not being that. So as long as we're all telling the truth at the table and we know where we're going to go, and hopefully this is going to be a great project, but to not have our, our chief information department as well as the steering committee, they need to be made aware. You can't just simply, to the chairman's point, be invited to a meeting and say, well, you would have learned it if you went to a meeting. Bullshit. So let's make sure that, I think, you heard from all of us what our expectation is, and I'm hopeful we're going to meet in that.
And so again, with that, I want to thank everyone for being here today. Thank you for, for your efforts on this. We appreciate the importance that all your different organizations have, have put on this, and, and thank you for, for walking through all this with us. And anything, any other comments? Yes, Ed?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that with all the dynamics here, of course, this will be a flagship product. And when you look at, you know, our, and the board has mentioned this on a number of occasions, our expectations around how we position ourselves as the fourth product's founder and so on, and our expectations of our, our services and our systems, and that this will be a really great product and a nice tool for the county. It's like the fourth on how assessment is done and the turn of the back. So we're going to get there, and it's going to be great, and it's, it's going to be very functional for us.
Excellent. Two President Sellers?
Mr. Chairman, back to the slide, conclusion, the ask, that says conclusion and that's a quote, but conclusion, the ask, we're going to be asked to approve. Tim, is that, is, do we cover that part? Did we cover that line item? Because I was deep in thought with all this other stuff going on. So there's going to be an ask of us then, upcoming.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hickman, there's two agenda items on Wednesday's agenda. I don't know, Secretary would know where they're at. I don't know where they are.
They're currently scheduled to be on the agenda. Pen in the triple of this board, you move it forward onto the final agenda for Wednesday. And I think Mr. Boncowski went over what those, did you have a slide on what those two agenda items were?
So one, we're going to reduce it, right?
Correct.
In like 300 or some of that.
Correct. Number 19 is all the changes into the contract, and 58 is a reduction in the assessor's office budget by 309,000.
They will not be those numbers on your agenda. They will be numbered on the agenda, but like that's where they were on the draft.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is the one thing that bums me a little bit. Sorry, we're all talking about we're, we're a little bit upset. Here's the thing that upsets me, Tim, because we've been talking about this for a number of years. I mean, we were talking about this when I was appointed to this board with another board, and, and I can just say Steve and I have the most amount of experience with this system. And I, I think that the county is probably also with other software systems, maybe different agencies is watching this, because, you know, my hopes were, hey, this is, it ran into a rough patch with another company. And I remember someone, and I don't know if it's on, where it was at, but somebody said, you, you can't use the same guys that got you into the same problem. So we shifted, right? We shifted teams. Recently, we've had a quarterback shift a little bit, not on our own accord, but was put on it. We put Bill Wiley in there just, and now we're having this. I, I feel it's strange, you know, that we put Bill in and now we're having something like this, under Bill's direction, Ed feeling weird, you feeling like you need to address this board for the agenda ask. So can I feel confident that you've made, or what changes then are you making? Because we're, we still aren't with the same guys now for, over the last two years. How can we feel confident then, that this is going to get across the goal line? Because there's other programs, software programs we're working on right now and other agency heads that might be having the same meeting with us. And I, I hope that we're doing this well as a board, that we're asking the right questions so we can get these projects done in our tenure, Steve, Bill, really. So what do you think?
Mr. Chairman, I'd say that the, the changes we're putting in to this contract will give you a higher level of assurance than you currently have. I mean, the person who's the most disappointed in this whole deal is myself, okay? Because I feel like, you know, I've let you down by making comments in the last three years that this is going to be delivered on time. Okay? So that was a very hard decision to make on the 18th. Could, you know, we've come in here and buffled you and said, yeah, we're going to go live on an 85% product, and then we got workarounds and paper flying out of the assessor's office? Couldn't we have done that? Yeah, probably. But we didn't. You know, I talked to the chairman, the first indication, he said, come up and talk to me about what are the things that are going to be important to the assessor's office and what do I need to know? And that was a Friday we made that decision on a no-go, and I met with him, his leadership, on that Monday, the 21st. And honestly, the assessor didn't even know. I told the chairman first. Okay? So I'm disappointed about this more than anybody, okay? But I think the contract that OPS, Eric, our consultant, and Esri has agreed to in writing, it's not their leader in Vancouver that signed that, it's their ownership in Toronto that signed that deal with us. So even though I may not be here when this goes live, okay, I believe this contract is sound and that it might be a model if we're going to do this type of development, agile development in the future for our software, that this would be a model to do this.
Mr. Chairman, that's President Chukuri. That just prompts the question, I mean, Mr. Hickman, and around about what you asked too, is are we okay if we do have shifting chairs over the course of the assessor's office as far as your points of contact? And do you feel confident if, if you were to leave or change in ownership, and a trade comes in and, and other folks, or retirements, whatever the case?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chukuri, I believe that, you know, the assessor's office is greater than one person.
Okay.
Or two people.
Okay.
These guys, these two guys in the front row here have been doing this project for six years.
They'll retire.
Okay, either one of them.
They're in the 2022.
He's the wages at Taco Bell going up faster than his employee, so he might be going there, okay? This guy's been in finance, okay? And, and Bill has given some direction in the last couple of weeks.
Because I hate to have all this success now, we, we ride in the runner and then we lose the people for whatever the reason, and then now we're, so I heard that Ed, that he doesn't retire before 2022.
You, please.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, again, thanks to everyone for your time and your work on this. And I think I would entertain a motion. Motion to executive session.
Motion to go into executive session, Mr. Chairman.
If motion is second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chairman?